Good afternoon. I want to call the regular October Board of Trustees meeting for Kansas City, Kansas Community College to order. And I want to like, ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led today by Dr. Yinoa Yunoki, one of our newest American citizens. So, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And Dr. Yunoki, if you would just wait there for me a minute, please? Steal the mic from you. I have a special presentation for you today. This flag is the United States flag that was flying over the college on that day, September, remind me what day it was? September 27th, when you and many others took your oath and became citizens of the United States. So, this is the flag that was flying up front over the college on that day. And Mr. Bodie had it taken down and militarily folded for you and preserved in this case. And we would like to present it to you in return of your successful completion of becoming a United States citizen. So, we congratulate you and welcome. Now, if you would care to say a few words, you are welcome to.
Wow. This is too much for me. I want to say thank you so much to all of you who are here to witness this. To tell you the truth, when in 2005 I accepted appointment here, Ohio State had given me a job and the Chinese State University had offered me employment. But for one reason or the other, I knew I had a destiny with KCKCC. My job here, I don't know why you are paying me so well, honestly, frankly speaking, to do a job that is giving service to God. How could a former child soldier, whose parents didn't go to school? How could a former child soldier, who was to be killed in Nigeria, have had this sort of wonderful destiny? I got, this is a country that offered me scholarship to get my PhD from Howard University, one of the best universities in the world. This is a country that I was married and for about 30 years, or 20, sorry, 20 something years, we couldn't have another child. When my wife and I came to the United States, God gave us my 11-year-old daughter. How could I leave this great country, the greatest country on earth, the strongest country, the most powerful country? When you say there's problem with United States, I say there is no problem in United States. You need to go somewhere else and look for where there is problem. I'm not saying that my new country is a perfect society, but I'm saying many people sacrificed blood to lay the foundation that you and I are enjoying today. And all I promise you today is that I have come to serve and serve and serve and do nothing but to serve this community. I thank you all so much.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Dr. Yunoki. We're sure that the community that is Kansas City, Kansas Community College and the greater Kansas City, Kansas and Kansas City metropolitan area is richer for having you here as one of our citizens. And thank you so much.
Thank you so much, too. Thank you so much for everything. I can never thank you enough.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for indulging us in that special moment there and for being here to share in it for Dr. Yunoki. And we appreciate very much. And now, we'll go on with the agenda and I'll ask Peggy to call the role.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brydenthal.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
And Trustee Townsend.
Present.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. Item three is approval of the amendment to the, including the amendment to the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four is approval of the minutes. You will note, trustees, we need to approve three separate minutes for the three separate meetings. One occurring on September 17th, one on September 30th, and one on October 3rd. So, we'll take them one at a time.
Move for September 17th.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Number two.
Approval of September 30th.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That second one carries. And finally.
Move approval of October 3rd.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And now, agenda item number five. Audience to patrons and petitioners, is there anyone present that would care to address the board this afternoon? All right. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number six, communications. Dr. Givens?
There is, the first one is a communication by Professor Darren Elliott and Professor Curtis Smith to make a presentation on behalf of the College Senate.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Pardon us as we get, pardon us as we get ready. We have some things for you. On behalf of the Faculty Senate and the College Senate, it's my pleasure to speak to you today. We are presenting you each with a copy of a resolution the College Senate has passed. Everyone who is receiving this is named in the resolution. And once we have this resolution passed out, I will read through it for the folks in the audience who do not have a copy. And to, College Senate Resolution commending the work of those responsible for opening the Dr. Thomas Burke Kansas City, Kansas Community College Technical Education Center. Whereas Kansas City, Kansas Community College has opened the Dr. Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center. And whereas President Emeritus Dr. Thomas R. Burke had the vision to establish the new Technical Education Center. And whereas Vice President Brian Bodie worked tirelessly and gave of himself selflessly to the extent that he spent countless personal hours ensuring successful completion of the project, including taking classes on his own time and working with all contractors and subcontractors overseeing all aspects of the project. And whereas President Dr. Doris Givens worked closely with the Vice President and college personnel to see the project through completion and dedication of the new facility. And whereas Board of Trustees members, Mr. Donald Ash, Mrs. Kathy Brydenthal, Dr. Ray Daniels, Mrs. Mary Ann Flunder, Mr. Wendell Maddox, Mr. John JD Rios, Mr. Clyde Townsend, aided by legal counsel, Mr. Darrell Winn, gave their blessing and all possible support for the project for completing the new facility. And whereas Dean Cliff Smith of the Technical Education Center and his faculty and staff worked tirelessly in both the planning stages of the project and completion of the new facility, up through every detail, including moving into and holding an open house of the new facility. And whereas KCKCC Buildings and Grounds, led by Mr. Jeff Sixta, were instrumental in facilities' planning, renovation, and completion through endless hours of work, paying attention to every detail. And whereas Dean Baz Abalainian and Information Services gave of their time and expertise in the areas of technology and services to ensure the completed facility would be state-of-the-art in both presentation and information technology. And whereas the entire KCKCC community of administration, faculty, students, and staff, though not named individually above, all played a significant role in the completion of this project. Now therefore be it resolved by the College Senate of Kansas City, Kansas Community College upon recommendation of the Faculty Senate, that we congratulate and commend those in this resolution for the vision and expertise that has allowed Kansas City, Kansas Community College the opportunity to open a state-of-the-art Technical Education Center that will propel our students and our community towards further successes. And be it further resolved that this resolution be delivered at the next monthly Board of Trustees meeting of Kansas City, Kansas Community College and copies presented to those named herein. Authored Darren Elliott Faculty Senate on behalf of the 2013-2014 College Senate, signed Curtis Smith, PhD, October 3rd, 2013. This resolution came through the Faculty Senate and we presented it to the College Senate for their approval and blessing. And in both of the Senates, it was unanimously approved to congratulate those of you named herein and to give you a copy of the resolution. All of us, in speaking for the faculty and other staff that I've talked to, the opening of that facility was amazing. I've mentioned that to some of you. And the work that went into it was truly inspiring. And as someone who travels all over the country and I see other places and other facilities, that building rivals anything I've seen anywhere in the country. And we really felt like everyone should be commended. And there were a lot of folks that spent a lot of time on it. And so, the College Senate wanted to pass along that commendation to those of you in this group and to Dean Smith. We have a copy of the resolution for you as well. And one for Jeff and one for Baz. So, we wanted to congratulate you. I think Curtis wanted to mention the members of the College Senate. And then, thank you very much.
Just wanted to mention who the members of the College Senate are in light of this award. And for Staff Senate, that would be Tammy Miller, Faith Moody, Rob Crane, Kimberly Scott. Dr. Ray Daniels, of course, is Board Trustee Representative to College Senate. And for the Administration, Marvin Hunt, Shirley Walker, Cliff Smith, Michael Vitale. For Faculty, Darren Elliott, Yelena Ozagovic, Herschel Martin, and myself. And then for the Students, it would be Wendy Moneris, Gretchen Torres, Eva Bet, and Alex Glanzman. Wanted to mention all of them.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, thanks to both of you and to the entire College Senate. We appreciate it. I think that Center is obviously something all of us are extremely proud of. And a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into that work over lots of, lots of time. But I think obviously as we look at it, it was well worth it. As we see it, be a beehive of activity down there and all of the students and everything that's, the learning and everything that's going on down there is the best reward, I think, that we could receive. But we certainly do thank you for the special recognition. Appreciate you bringing it for us today. Does any other Board member wish to address these gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I'm in order, I would like to make a motion to adopt this resolution that's came, that's coming from the Senate of the College for the Board of Trustees at this time.
You mean to adopt it? Accept it?
Accept it and move to accept it.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion to accept it and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And once again, thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks to everyone. Okay. Other communication?
Yes. We have a communication from, let me say thank you to, that was a very nice thing to do for us. We definitely appreciate the recognition. It affects us very favorably. Thank you. The Gentlemen's League of Kansas City, thank us from the bottom of their hearts for partnering with the Gentlemen's League of Kansas City and the Light of Christ, the King's Group for last month's successful shoe drive. Because of your generosity and sharing, we have collected over 1,500 pairs of shoes that will, that will go to that person without shoes in an underdeveloped country. Because of your unselfishness, people's lives will be impacted in countries we ourselves may never get to see. The impact of the International Shoes Project concept has helped others, including our world's young people, to learn the value of hard work and entrepreneurship as they refurbish what would otherwise be thrown away. Finally, your contribution will help to keep more waste from going into the landfills of our nation. I'm reminded of Matthew 25:36, "I was without clothes and you gave me something to wear." To everyone that collected, donated, announced, or participated in any way at all, thank you so very much. Mark Semet, Executive Director of the Gentlemen's League of Kansas City.
All right. Thank you.
I have another letter. I'll do that later.
Okay.
I think that's...
All right. We'll move on then to item seven on the agenda, which is the President's Report. So, you get to keep the mic.
The first thing that I'd like to have reported is Patrick McCartney on the Endowment Association.
Patrick, Duana?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Givens has asked me to come here this afternoon. Every other month, we send out a board report to all of our Endowment Board, which is some updates of things going on, what the Endowment's been working on. She asked me to share some of that stuff with you here today. Duana's passing out the report that we send out. JD's already seen this, obviously is our Board of Trustee Rep. But wanted to go through this real quick and then answer any questions y'all might have about the report. First thing on the list there that you see, and obviously first and most important, what the Endowment does is obviously we raise money and manage it and distribute it and award it for scholarships to students here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. So, for the fall of 2013, the Endowment has awarded over 120 scholarships to students here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College for an approximate value of about $150,000 for this semester. We haven't got our bill yet with the exact total, but that's our estimate of what that bill is going to be that we pay to the college at the end of the year. We received 150 applications this year for the scholarships, which is an increase from 92 in the previous fall year. So, we were pleased with that. And we're going to continue to keep working to try to, both internally and externally, to increase those applications and hopefully increase the number of scholarships that we're able to award. Last Thursday night, we had our second meet and greet event. If you all remember, we had a joint meeting back last November where we talked about raising the visibility of the college to the community. And this is one of the things that we talked about doing. This is our second one. We had it out at Hollywood Casino. Thank you to all of you who were able to join us that evening. We had about 90 reservations for the event, had about 50 people who were able to attend that evening. Dr. Givens gave a great report on what's going on with the college. And I gave him a little update on the, on the Endowment. And again, a great way for us to build relationships with folks that are some potential donors here for the college and to let them know some of the success stories and things that are going on here. Mid-America Education Hall of Fame Dinner will be Saturday night, November 2nd. Duana included in there with you an invitation to that event. I think most of you are already signed up with the Board of, Mr. Bodie has bought a couple of tables and you all are sitting at that. We are pleased, right now, we are about $3,000 ahead of sponsorship dollars of what we raised last year. We've already raised $3,000 more than that, what we've brought in last year. If you know of anyone that is interested in being a sponsor that you may have talked to, we need to know by Thursday because we've got to get stuff to the printer for signs and programs and stuff. Want to make sure they get proper acknowledgement if they sign up to be a sponsor. Reservations, on the other hand, are going really slow and we're not sure why. We're a little bit over 200 reservations for the dinner right now with a potential capacity of 320. Historically, we have sold this event out. Not sure why reservations are going slow, to be quite honest. We haven't had really any feedback of why. So, we could really use your help if you, again, have talked to people out there who have talked about maybe coming to the event, buying a table, buying a sponsorship, buying a seat. Please have them get in touch with us as soon as possible. Our reservation deadline is about October 25th is when we have to give final food numbers. Just completed our 2012-2013 audit, Novak Burks, who also does the college's audit, prevented a draft of the audit to our Finance Committee last week, which they accepted. And that audit will be presented to our full board in November at the full board meeting for their acceptance. And will also be included in the college's audit when Bill Miller comes here and presents that audit to you all for the college. The Kansas City Chiefs, who are 6-0 at the time, as we all know, approached us several months ago about a potential fundraiser for the Endowment, in which we were going, we sold tickets for the Chiefs at a discounted rate for $35. And $10 of every ticket sold would come back to the Endowment Association. So, we promoted that offer to all of our students and all of our employees and put it out on Facebook and LinkedIn and all the other different ways. And we were excited to announce, we sold 95 tickets, which generated $950 for the Endowment Association, which was a nice little income for us with, quite honestly, not a whole lot of work until the tickets came in, which they did today. And Duana had to divvy them up and see who sits where's. But, so we're really pleased to do that. We hope to do that again next year. I'm guessing if the Chiefs keep on this path, this offer may not be there next year. But, you know, I'm kind of torn on that one, but we'll see how that works. Gala event, we also talked about at our meeting when we all got together last time was for this visibility issue that we discussed of doing a major fundraising event for the college. We had our first meeting of our Gala Committee on October 1st. They have selected October 25th, 2014, is the date for the Gala Event at Lake Quavera. This is the first meeting we've had. We don't have a whole lot of other details to fill you in on about that now, but as more information becomes available, we will make sure to, to share that with you. And Kathy Brydenthal and Ray Daniels both serve on that committee as the Board of Trustee Rep. So, they will, I'm sure, keep you updated on how we progress with that event. We will have information on sponsorships and ticket prices and all that stuff, hopefully in the next couple of months. And speaking of sponsorships, one of the other things Duana, I think, handed out to you, that Endowment is in the process right now of out promoting, selling sponsorship packages as a revenue generator for the Endowment. We are hoping to approach a lot of the businesses and corporations in town that have supported us in the past. And instead of nickel and dime them for every event that we do and keep coming to them for a check every time, ask them to just write one check at the first of the year and have that money and they're done for the year. So, every time they see my name come up on their caller ID, they won't think I'm calling, asking for money. And hopefully, I'm calling to do something else with them. So, we have reached out to several of our partners, had meetings with Security Bank and Brotherhood, J.E. Dunn, going to meet with MVP tomorrow, folks like that, and some other, other potential sponsors that we're working on. So, if you know of any companies out there that you think would have an interest in supporting the Endowment, we'd love to get their contact information. Maybe you can join me as we go call on them and talk about the things the Endowment's doing. And hopefully get them to sign up and support the college and promote and raise some funds for our scholarships. So, that is the report. Real quickly, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions about any of the stuff that's in the report, if you might have it. Okay. Well, thank you all.
Very complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, under the VP's report, VP of Student Services?
As I'd like to introduce Jennifer Geeson, who is the staff sponsor to the QS Diversity Club. Jennifer, and her students.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. The Outquestioning and Straight Diversity Club is our gay-straight alliance on campus. The club got started in 2004, so this is their 10th year. I started as the original advisor and Terry Bennett, who works in the library, is now my co-advisor. There are 25 students on our email list and about half a dozen, dozen students who are consistently active with the club. The majority of the work they do consists of educational programs to combat homophobia and discrimination. Five students from the club recently went to a college student career conference designed very specifically to meet their unique career, career needs. And if you're wondering what their unique needs are, I will tell you that in 29 states, it is legal to fire someone just because they are gay. And in 33 states, it is legal to fire someone just because they are transgender. And Kansas and Missouri are two of those states. With that in mind, I'd like to introduce them to let them tell you about the conference. Our president is Toya Harrington. Our vice president is Stacy Clifton Harrington. And Aspen Maxwell is one of the students. And we'll start with Stacy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Out for Work Conference is the, it was the ninth annual this year, National LGBTQ and Ally College Student Career Conference. It took place September 27th through the 29th at the University of Illinois at Chicago. The conference brought 330 attendees from 49 college campuses across the country from 26 different states. I will say KCKCC was the only community college in attendance. The conference featured breakout sessions, workshops, and keynotes by Mona Noriega and Celeste Berry, and sessions presented by companies, organizations, and individuals leading the way in LGBTQ workplace inclusion. The Pride Career Fair at the conclusion of the conference included 31 companies from a variety of industries promoting their career and internship opportunities. And I'll give you Aspen for some more.
During the conference, there were many things that were interesting and enjoyable, one of which were the speaker, which were the speakers. Two stood out the most to me, Mona Noriega and Celeste Berry. Mona is the commissioner on the Human Relations and has dedicated, dedicated her life to eliminate prejudice and discrimination. Since the early 1970s, she has been an activist and has developed a program to serve lesbian mothers and their families to help allow them to keep their children. Celeste is the founder and chief executive officer of Outniggle, the largest nonprofit organization dedicated to creating a safe workplace for LGBT people. Both have invested their lives to help others overcome issues that can be very similar to the ones they have experienced. Both inspired what I am sure was not only to me, but others during our short but intriguing time in Chicago.
And our president, Toya Harrington.
Hi. Going to this conference, I always knew what I wanted to do, be what I wanted, you know, be when I grew up. Being able to attend this kind of really made it clear and showed me more options available to me. And let's see, without Jennifer Geeson and Terry Bennett, we wouldn't have the club. So, I would really like to thank them for starting it. Thank you to Andrea Chastain in the Community Outreach Center. She offered us professional wear for the conference since they were like taking applications, resumes, so we would look appropriate. And most of all, thank you to you guys for the funding, for the chances, just for all the opportunities we've been given. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you as well and thank the college to work with this group and to take them on this trip. I think it was very, very meaningful for them to, to see role models and to talk with companies where they have employee resource groups and for them to find out that there are companies across the United States that are safe places for them to work. They learned how to identify companies and what to look for on their websites, how to go about their job search when they are not protected in so many states. So, they learned some very, very, very helpful and very valuable information. learned some very, very, very helpful and very valuable information. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the enlightening report. And students, congratulations. And learning takes place in many different ways, in many different places, and many different venues. And so, we're pleased you were able to have that experience. And you obviously learned quite a bit from it. So, thank you for sharing us the report with us. Trustees, additional comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for representing our college. I think this is a really important committee, a really important group in our college, and I want to thank you for being a part of it. I think you mentioned being role models. I think that's important. And so, I think your role in this college is very important. Thank you for doing it.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Avilenin is not here, but we'll recognize him next time. And...
He's at a conference presenting on his social media to colleges and its importance.
And he does a fantastic job. Sometimes we have to tell him to come down out of the clouds and speak normal English.
But that's normal, folks.
Yeah, you know, when they get their doctorates, they're in the clouds for a little while. But he's great, and I'm glad we have him here. And also, our culinary arts team was not able to be here today, and hopefully, they'll be here. They've won the David and Goliath cook-off. So, we want to have them here to, maybe they'll bring some tasting.
We can only hope. We can only hope.
But that'd be nice.
Talk to their dean about that.
On Wednesday of, on Wednesday evening of last weekend, greeting the Windout Economic Development Supporters in our new Dr. Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center, Mayor Holland mentioned that KCK had applied for, or was in the running for a site for a large company to be relocated, to be located here in KCK. And one of the things that the group was really excited about was the fact that he mentioned Kansas City, Kansas Community College as a training opportunity for those people that would be hired and for those that were already hired by the country, by the company. And he said that was a major turning point. So, we're waiting with bated breath to see if we actually get the contract and that the company actually comes to KCK. We're working with several institutions, including District 500 and KU Edwards Campus, to provide additional learning opportunities for their students and for ours. We just completed a presentation in Seattle, Washington, at the ACCT, Association of Community College Trustees, where we presented our strategic plan. Not so much the plan itself, but the process that led us to the completion of our three-year plan. It was very well received with lots of questions, and we, it was a good, it was a good opportunity for us to do that. And it fits in with the board's direction to get us out there talking about the college more on the national level. So, people will know that KCKCC is really a place for students to be and for other folks to work. Right now, over at the Dr. Thomas R. Burke Center, we have the Clary Training going on. I think it's a three and a half day training. It's on, and Clary has to do with campus security and safety reporting, or more specifically, the Gene Clary Disclosure of Campus Security Policy and Campus Crime Statistics Act. We have, there were three spaces because we hosted it. And we have three people from the college who are attending that meeting. Jason Severs from the Police Department, Dr. Sun Kimin, and our internal auditor, Doug. So, we have those attending. And they said it's just lots of information that we need in order to make sure that our college is in compliance. So, they will be back and telling us how we need to shore things up. There are 54 attendees, and they're from colleges all over the United States, Montana, Montana State, Texas A&amp;M, Johnson County Community College, KU Med, University of Texas at Arlington, University of Oregon, University of Colorado, Chapman in Orange County, California, and from, of course, KCKCC and many other places, too. Important dates that I'd like to remind the board of, In the Heights will be here on campus. It is the first effort of our theater and music departments to offer a reception, dinner, and a show. And that's this coming Saturday, October 19th, at 5:30, and dinner at 6:00. And it will all be in Upper Jewel. And then, the production will begin at 8:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. So, if you don't have your ticket, they do have some left, and I think one of them has your name on it. So, make sure that. We support our department who's raising funds because they have invitations to go to travel, but they need funds to do that. So, if you will, please do that. And if you, and if you can't come, just sponsor somebody. It costs you about $30. No?
It's a great show. It was on the Starlight a couple of years ago. It's even for an old geezer like me, the music's wonderful. But if you get a chance to go, it really is a wonderful show. It's very entertaining and kind of up to date, too.
And it's absolutely. And it's exciting to see the people at KCKCC begin to do some things that are, that are new and different for us. So, right here at home, we can have some, we can have some fun and entertainment. And it is time for us to, for the board to talk about the National Legislative Summit in Washington, DC. The announcement is out. It'll be February 10th through the 13th in Washington, DC at the Marriott Wartum Park Hotel. So...
February 10th through 13th.
Well, I just got a message that says that we're getting closer to it. So, I don't And the mayor's prayer breakfast will be on the 8th of November. And the emcee for this year...
Do we know?
We do know. I will be the emcee for the, for the mayor's prayer breakfast this time. So, look forward to seeing you there.
I'm sure it'll be a real shock and awe performance.
It's usually at 6:30 in the morning or some bizarre hour. But I'll make sure that I get that, I'll make sure I get that, which makes it harder to be there 30 minutes earlier than that. But I'll be sure to get that information to you.
Do we have a table?
I'm sure we have a table. Yes. Yes. Just let Peggy, for board members, please, let Peggy know if you would like to attend, so we can make sure that you are seated at the table.
Did y'all catch that? Be sure you let Peggy know if you're available and want to attend the mayor's prayer breakfast. Okay. Right. I know it's too early for you, Mary Ann. I know.
And the only other thing is that the professional firefighters will be taking over the Lower Jewel on October 25th at 7:00 PM. They're going to do their training, their education and firefighter training to local and others throughout the state. So, they'll be taken over here on the 25th. That's all I have.
All right. Are there any questions or comments for the president regarding her report?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Townsend.
Madam President, this program going to be Saturday night?
It's Saturday night, yes.
Can you tell me what's the program that might be going on up there that starts on the 17th? A musical? It's something on the 17th at the Performing Arts Center, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Can you tell me anything about that?
Yes, I did. It's, a night in the Heights. We'll be having dinner here, and then we'll have a performance on Saturday night. It's at 5:30, dinner at 6:00, and then the show at 8:00. Is that the one?
No. The one that I'm thinking of, my grandson, he's been practicing every damn night for a musical up at the Arts Center that starts Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and probably Sunday.
It's the same one, except that on Saturday night, we'll have dinner.
Right.
And then the show, right here, right here in Upper Jewel.
Oh, hell.
You just paid the $40 and go.
Yeah. Yeah, just give up the money, grandpa, and come tend to it. Sure.
I said it was $30, but it's $30 because I bought two tickets. It's $15 if one person comes.
$20 at the door, so buy in advance.
And different if you are a senior citizen or if you work at the college and all of that, different price of, floating price of tickets. But it's the same.
Same, same musical.
Yes. I was just asking for support for the Saturday night showing because that's the major fundraiser for theater and fine arts.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, I'm afraid to ask, but any other questions for the president? All right. Let's move to agenda item number eight, which calls for an executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters, protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. We'll need a motion for that.
How long do we need?
We don't have any, right?
No.
Nope. All right. Excellent.
Move not to go.
We do not need item number eight, right? Mark it down. Okay. Let's move to number nine, personnel. And we'll hear from Dean Marks.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hello. First of all, we have on the agenda the policy handbook, the draft of the handbook of policies and procedures. And you have it before you. It looks like this. So, you'll have some great reading to do over the next month. There are a lot of changes. And the changes you'll find are in the red font.
You see that?
There's strike-throughs, there's new language, corrections, and so forth. We'll correct the page numbering and the table of contents after everything is finalized. I also included an executive summary for you in the folder, which will kind of help you as you go through to see what the changes are, to explain the changes that were made and corrections.
Okay. All right. Questions?
Can you give us a little more synopsis of what you think we should pay particular attention to?
Well, you mean the particular policies that you should pay particular?
Well, there are several. But are there any that you would really like to highlight or, you know, that have a little additional...
Attention.
...pertinence at this juncture?
Okay. Well, I'll just go over a few of them, to name them, such as the organizational chart, which is found on page seven. And that contains an updated picture of the college organization as it is right now. And then, over the next few sections that describe the administrative changes that have taken place as far as different reporting and different titles. The current book was written when we had a provost, so we've gone through and changed all the language where it says provost is now vice president, one of the vice president's titles in there. There are a number of changes to the hiring policy, policy 2.0. And as I said on your summary sheet that I've given you, those changes are summarized. We're also recommending for the first time a criminal background check for all potential new hires, because there's new policy in there for that.
J.E., you gotta read the whole time.
I'm just highlighting a few of the main ones.
But I know it's all important, Mary Ann, but I, I just want to be certain that, because some of these are actually new policies and others are what I would just term adjustments to current policy. Is that correct?
Yes, and that is noted on your summary. Those that are new and those that are revisions and what they are.
And those that are new are the red.
And the explanation as to why the change is being recommended. Also, some significant changes you'll find in the smoking policy, combining two policies. We did have two policies on that. So, we are recommending to combine the two. There's some new language in the drug and alcohol use policy.
So, on the smoking policy, that was one of the things that was brought up when we met with the College Senate. So, I'm assuming that there was some consultation. At our meeting, it was, we were told that we couldn't come to an accord, but now you say we have a policy.
There have been consultation with the College Senate on, on these changes. And we received some recently, as a few days ago, that the committee has not had an opportunity to address yet. And so, the policy committee will be reviewing the most recent recommendations that the College Senate has sent us and making a recommendation about those suggestions. I don't know if you have anything you might have.
These are pretty extensive changes, other than what is just changing titles. So, I really urge, we actually considered asking for a special meeting to see if we could do all these. And I still think that's, there's some pretty major changes in here that I think the board needs to talk about. I don't say, okay. Because I think we still have a couple that we're kind of discussing back and forth.
Right. Yes.
I'm not sure we can do that in one meeting like this. So, I'd ask, Dr. Gil, if you could give consideration for a special meeting where we do these. We need some of the policies for our college. It's a work we're going to lift up and a lot of the staff and students to, and faculty to deal with.
But this is presented as first reading at this time?
This is presented as first reading. And the last time...
But we can still amend.
I think there are still some questions.
This is just to give you your discussion item, but when you approve, you can amend even then. I understood this was just to educate the trustees and begin the discussion.
Thank you. Good.
Yeah, well, Gray's maybe being more eloquent than I am, but I, I do think that in order, even in one meeting, and leaving this to be the sole topic, I mean, you can see here, there's no way you do justice. And so, that's why I was asking for particular, that we want to be sure that we are very well versed. We want to be versed in the whole thing. But again, you know, I think it's recognized that we're not going to know every page and every paragraph on the page. But we certainly want to be cognizant of those policies particularly that are totally new, policies that have had major adjustments, and how those came about and what they are. I think that those are all very remain discussion that need to be had. And so, if you could give us some of that ahead, so that then the meeting doesn't just become kind of a read-aloud, what we call an education, you know, because it needs to be more than that, you know, to get to Gray's point.
I think we can send you a list of the ones that we'll discuss in a session. And true, it will probably take more than one, maybe more than two sessions, but we will plan them, and then we'll send you a list of the ones we will focus on for that particular session, depending on the length of it.
So, is there one clear we're talking about, a special meeting or two possibly to review this? Okay. That's good.
All right.
Thank you, Leota.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to move to the personnel report for your information, 9A, 1 and 2, and for your approval, 9B, 1 through 26.
Group approval of the recommendations as presented?
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second to accept the recommendations. Any question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right, thank you.
I'm also going to, I don't think in the past, we've been accepting her report. We do the two vice presidents, and I want to move that we accept Human Resources report on page, whatever page it is, which is not for education, which is future report.
Yes.
So I, I move we accept the Stevens Human Resources report.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept Dean Marks's report. Any question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Now, thank you, Leota.
All right, thank you.
Very good. All right, we are ready for item number ten. Vice President for Academic Affairs report, we'll hear from Dr. Vitale.
Our reports there certainly would like to entertain any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a few, uh, questions, and I did call, um, the vice president prior, so he is a co-adjacent of the questions, so I'm sure he'll be able to rapid-fire the answers. Uh, under highlights, I just asked, uh, for some insight on the, uh, meeting between Prep KC and USD five hundred in regards to expanding the opportunities for the dual enrollment of high school students.
Well, what we've been discussing is, is right now, there's, there's a limit on, now is it on?
Yeah.
Yeah, now it's on, unless that it turns out. We've been discussing how we can get more college credits for students while they're still in, in high school. Even to the point that some of them would earn an associate's degree prior to graduating from high school. And so that's involved discussions pertaining to, we would start getting the students the college credit classes and those types of strategies, and, uh, I've been having those discussions with Prep KC as well as the superintendent and staff at USD five hundred and as we work out some of the details, we'll certainly expand it to all of the school districts. Now. Okay, is that better? A little better, okay. Look, just to recap, the, we've been working with Prep KC and USD to expand the dual enrollment opportunities for high school students. Hopefully with the goal of getting high school students, at least some of them, their associate's degree when they graduate from high school. Uh, we do recognize that not every student will be able to attain that, but we want to encourage them to experience at least college-level coursework and help them understand that they are capable of doing that. We've made it a point to, to also include in this discussion certificate programs, technical education, along with the more traditional college transfer, baccalaureate-type work. And we want to also encourage the, the students that do the, the career pathways to recognize that that's not the end necessarily of their education, that there are other opportunities and pathways that they can go so that as, as they move out into the workforce, if they want to advance and, and become more supervisors and managers, that there is still that opportunity to continue on and earn a baccalaureate degree or higher if that's what they, they want.
Okay. All right, well, I, I think that's, uh, very good. I, I know that across the river, uh, there was, uh, several, well, several, I, it was two news articles about, uh, the Kansas City, Missouri School District and the Metropolitan Community College, uh, able to have on, when the high school students graduated, they also received their AA that same night. And I think that's a tremendous, uh, not just opportunity, but a realization of the day's world and the economy, uh, which we are living in today, and it just emphasized that the high school diploma is not sufficient in this economy. They have to have certificates. The associates working toward, uh, a higher, uh, goal in education, and so I'm very, uh, thankful that you are in these conversations, and I hope that maybe you consult. I don't, I, I know that some of the, uh, regulations and so forth are different from state to state, but somehow they figured it out next door, and I would think that we could do better, uh, once we get going.
We're figuring it out on this side as well.
Okay.
It's a, let me just say that it's a panel of us. It's a group of us that meet with District five hundred, and, and all of us have different specialties, including admissions and testing and, and different areas that are part of this discussion, so it's not just one person.
One, one person.
It's a pride of, yes.
While you are working with them, is it possible to get the students from the academy to also go to the tech center, or is that still just college prep only? Because the students at Sumner do not come to the tech school.
Well, that would be a USD five hundred issue, not a KC KCC issue.
Anybody's welcome to come to our tech center, and one of the things that I have.
No, they don't allow, the students at Sumner cannot take classes at, at all.
But that's not, but that's not our policy.
It's not us limiting you.
Trustee flunder, that's, that's USD.
Okay, but while you're having discussion, can you do that? Because it would be good for some of them to attend.
Which is the high school that can't come?
Academy can't.
Sumner.
Sumner Academy.
It's a, it's just prep for college, but you know, it's really amazing because some of those kids could take the tech classes and use that to go to college on, uh, having a job in that field. So it would be a good duel if we could do that. So while you all are talking to them, talk them into letting the students also, if they want to, to be able to attend, because right now they can't.
All right, well, I just wrote myself a note to find out why they can't dual-enroll.
Obviously a rule, I guess.
See what we can do about that.
Okay. Then you also attended a meeting of the taxing authorities of the Wanda County, and I was just interested in your perspective as a newcomer, new doc.
Okay.
Your, just your general perceptions?
Well, it was kind of, it was really an interesting meeting, and I'm not sure, but what it wasn't one of the first ones that they'd ever had where all the taxing authorities were together in the same room at the same time, and it was all very civil. There wasn't any finger-pointing or, uh, going on. In fact, uh,
That's refreshing.
One of the things that, that the mayor started out by doing was asking, you know, for, looking at the legislative priorities of the different entities that were there, and, and went around the table and talked about them, and, uh, Dr. Daniels was there as well, and he talked as a representative of KC KCC, but, uh, I think the biggest issue that came out from that round of discussions was from the, the superintendents, uh, and I guess there's a legal court battle, court case going on about whether or not the, the legislature is funding the school districts at the level that the law says they're supposed to, so they talked about those things, and, and really, the bottom line from the superintendents were, if they were funded at the level that they believe they're supposed to be, then there could be some relief on the taxing situation. And so they were, uh, putting together a kind of a, uh, all-inclusive summary of what the legislative priorities for all the entities would be, and they agreed to continue to have future meetings to discuss the, the taxing issue.
Under library, uh, was wondering, it is maybe a tag team, uh, here with the vice president voting, but it says that our athletes are required to, for their study hours each week, so they're utilizing our library. So I was wondering about that because we did get a report, um, on our athletic program, and it was great to hear that our, uh, ladies softball team ranked second among the nineteenth, uh, in the conference, so that was, that was wonderful news. Uh, and there were, there were ten academic, uh, honorees, uh, on the softball team, five on the baseball, five on the women's basketball, three in volleyball, two in golf, and one in soccer. There were none in the men's basketball, and there were none in the track program. And so that, while it was certainly called for celebration, it also made me wonder if we have three, four hundred athletes, I don't think I'm exaggerating that number, and it's just a handful of academic honorees, so I'm wondering about not just their attendance, but what's going on within the, uh, study sessions to help get even more of our students into this honor.
Well, I, I did talk to the library, uh, to get kind of their perspective on it as well, and the, the athletes are, are showing up, they're attending, they're signing in, they're supposed to, and according to them, you know, it's mixed in terms of how much studying, what we would consider studying is going on. A lot of that is driven by the individual athletes and what they actually have to do in terms of, of homework, if you will. Uh, I think what's important about it is they may not be studying today, but I think what they're seeing is, is they're getting in that pattern of, of going to the library, going to someplace where it's quiet, where there's that type of an environment where they will eventually start realizing that they can use that time wisely and, and doing some things. It would be nice, I, I think Tony, the athletic director, would be the first to say it'd be great if he had the staff that could, could conduct actual study sessions with the athletes throughout the day, but he doesn't have that kind of staff. But the, the students are not, they're not creating any problems in the library, that they are, they are quiet and, and respectful when they're there.
Let me just point out, is this new? I don't remember.
It is.
I think it is new.
It is new. I had a good conversation with Athletic Director Tompkins at the Endowment Association event last week, and the culture is changing, and, uh, and they're coming, coming around to his way of thinking, I think, and, uh, probably some are a little slower, as Dr. Vitale said, than maybe others, but, uh, with any cultural change, I think, you know, it's going to take a little time, and, but there is great improvement, so I think.
And a lot of it is going to come from the coaches themselves. I mean, when we, when we get the midterm grades and when the coaches start getting those kind of reports on their athletes, there is going to be a responsibility for the coaches to take some disciplinary action, whether it means a player sits out a game or sits out a quarter or a half, or, you know, runs laps or whatever, but really, the coaches will ultimately drive that level of academic excellence with their respective teams, at least that's my opinion. They have the biggest influence on.
I'd heard about Ford, written that here, I think it's a great program.
Tony implemented this and, and has made sure that each of his coaches understand the importance of this. Uh, he has a set of rules, and I couldn't quote them to you right now, but if you hit a three-five, you know, next semester, then maybe you don't have to be in study all twenty hours a week, and if you're below that, you only have to be in a little bit more. It's a good program. He's back there. And he, he kind of got a little heads up too.
Okay, good. All right, can you speak?
Um, yeah, something we implemented, um, there are, um, discipline, uh, there's like a five-step process, basically, um, so we are tracking it. We get, um, there has been a little, uh, when there's stuff new, obviously we have a couple bugs in it, and, uh, we're working with the tracking system and making sure that everything was on par and everything was good. So we had a couple issues early, um, but I was actually tracking it back there doing hours, so, um, the first offense they'd have is a warning, okay, and I communicate with the coach, they'll tell the athlete. Second one offense is discipline from the coach, um, usually is going to be running of some sort, and the third offense will be another discipline, uh, from the coach. I want the coach to have that one-on-one interaction, let them set the table of what they want. It also gives them some flexibility of what to discipline, uh, and, and I am tracking that weekly, and I communicate with that on a spreadsheet. We got everybody in there, and, uh, the fourth offense is a two-week suspension, so whether in season, out of season, it may possibly carry over. After that, the fifth offense is, is a possible dismissal from the team and loss of scholarship. So they're, we're kind of leaving it as a possible, just going to figure out where the student athlete is, whether they're, you know, really fighting it, you know, being bludgeoned about it, or are they really buying, trying to buy in, and, you know, some, it takes a little bit longer for some students to get going with this, you know, and, uh, and forget real reason why they're here, you know, is to get their education and to use athletics to get their education paid for and open doors for the future, so, um, so we're kind of leaving that door open, and, um, actually, I'm going to be meeting with a couple of students here, uh, shortly, so.
Tony, what constitution offense?
What's that?
What constitution offense, what, what is?
Um, they have to make a certain number of hours based on their GPA. Um, a three-point-five GPA, obviously, I think that student knows what they're doing. They don't have to go at all, so it's basically a reward system. Uh, if they're a three-point-oh to three-point-four-nine, they're four hours. Um, if they're a two-point-five to two-point-nine-nine, they're eight hours, and if they're below a two-five, that's ten hours.
Per, per week?
That's per week.
Per week.
Yeah, and then what we kind of ran into is we had a couple of students that enrolled late, and, um, I don't think they had anything to do because they were all in second-eight-week classes, and I tried to encourage them, "Talk to your teachers and see if you can't get some work ahead of time, and then you're ahead of the game when, when, uh, when, when the classes start." And then all freshmen as well, incoming freshmen, um, they have to have eight hours, no matter what their ACT or score was. And then we'll reevaluate, uh, at the spring semester and find out where they're at GPA-wise, and then they'll plug them into the different, different categories.
I just appreciate that you're following through, because I remember your description of this type of, of program in the interview process.
Right.
Um, and that was one of the things that I felt was a strength, uh, that you could bring, uh, to this institution, uh, was the commitment to, uh, scholarship.
Right.
And having scholar athletes.
Absolutely.
Uh, that, we certainly, you know, we want some wins and that sort of thing, and this is just built good for rep.
Right.
For the institution, but it is, uh, an institution of learning and education, and, uh, they, they got to have their priorities right, so I, I really do think that this is a great concept, and I, I just encourage you to continue, as I know there are some that, you know, I'm hoping that this is just a, a fad or something, I don't know, but I, I do think that it's a very worthwhile endeavor, so I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. And just one last question, in your edu-, uh, elementary and secondary education program report, they, you talked about a meeting with Emporia State University coming up on the articulation treatment.
Yeah, we're just, uh, you know, we were looking at some of the articulation agreements, and while that was signed in two thousand and eleven and runs through two thousand and eighteen, uh, Dr. Nair, who runs the program from our side, and I thought that it would be really to our advantage with the changes that have taken place here, uh, in academia, probably some changes there. Periodically, just to, to get to know each other and discuss strengths, weaknesses that we might, and any other opportunities that we might have, so it's a, it's really just, uh, to, to strengthen that relationship more than anything, not, any, there were no issues with it, it was just something that we just felt that, that we should do and have that personal touch, if not annually, at least every couple of years for an agreement that's, you know, runs for seven years, keep, keep on tou-, touch with it, because I believe when you have that personal connection. Because I believe when you have that personal connection, it tends to keep the agreement more vibrant and more alive.
Yeah. I appreciate that. So, that's going to be something you're going to be doing with the other.
Yes.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion?
So, move.
I'd have a motion in a second to accept the Vice President's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Vitale. And now, Mr. Bodie.
The report's also included in the board package. I know I'm going to get some questions here in a minute, but I would love to point out on page three, our Student Senate took a trip up on the city to the National Association of Campus Activities Central Legion Conference, and they have a competition at those conferences. And we put in two applications for the competition, one with a poster for our Back-to-School Bash based on, and we didn't do as well on it, but we did put in our T-shirt, and this was the T-shirt designed by the Senate for the Back-to-School Bash, and this is a big eye from Monster Inc. that they used. And we won the best article of clothing by a school under five thousand FTEs. So, we're proud of our Student Senate. More importantly, they go down there and they learn a lot of things about how Student Senate needs to us to interact with the faculty and the staff and the administration. And we have a strong Student Senate led by a very strong leader in Linda Sutton, and our Student Senate will represent our students very well. We're very proud of what they did while they were down there.
Excellent.
I'll answer any other questions.
First, under the, I guess it was athletics this month, but I just really, you know, hope there's some continuation, and that was as a support of our United Way campaign. And really, about community involvement, and our soccer team, what they noted here, about giveaways at halftime, and fifty percent of the concessions would go to the United Way. And I just think that is the right thing for our athletic department to do, to participate in. So, I just wanted to give kudos out for that. Did have a question about the delay on the cameras that are out.
They got fried in one of the electrical storms. Some of the cameras remained working, but some of them were out. They have been repaired, they're up and running again. With ninety-seven cameras around campus, we continue to have one go out here and there and struggle to get them. So, it's got severe flood on the building, seven on the second floor. We also lost one of the rooms. Because it got wet enough that some mold grew in it, we had to move some students around and waiting for that to clear.
Oh, sorry.
I drained a plugged dump out near the trees. It dumped enough leaves in, we think, caught it, and it backed up and it was softening and ran down the wall into one of our rooms. Royal Ridge is fixing it, but we tested the room. It tested, we kept it out somewhere, until we did it. They cleaned it. We said, "Good, thank you for cleaning it." Soon as it tests clean enough for our test pad for our students back in, but still they're not.
We had received, how do we accommodate those students in the first place?
We have a couple of extra beds in other rooms. If we have a four-person room or a two-person room with one person in it, we do that. And/or, we, in one case, went for a short period of time, we got Royal Ridge to give us one of their apartments. They've been very, and very company. They, I think they understand who the best-paid customer is, Royal Ridge is.
We had received a report on our housing just last year. We actually received a couple of reports, trustee member. And so, I was wondering if we could be looking forward to another report here in the next month, just the activities, the residents.
I will tell you, it will be phenomenally short. It's been a very, very quiet year.
And will you attribute that to, right? Something different?
Well, we're doing two things different. One, we, I think, putting all the ladies in one building and separating them at their request. That was the returning, the sophomore girls coming back, that we'd rather live in a building alone. So, as many of, that one building's completely laid, and there's some filtered in the other because we have too many. I think that helped. I think they, the ones that were here at the end of last year told people that we were serious. I think we have a lot of athletes in our housing. Implementation of unannounced and random drug testing has an impact on how much fun they have in the evening. And so, I think that has been a major change in, and they just know that if they do it, they're going to get caught, and if they get caught, they're going to be looking for a place to live somewhere else. We have, I think the last time I really looked at the number, five ladies and seventeen or eighteen young men waiting to move in. So, if you do that, we can give you three or four days to find a new place to live.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Vice President Bodie?
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion in a couple of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. Okay. We're at number twelve.
Ask for your approval of the payment of the bill under Finance Report 12A.
Who's payment of the bill?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ask for your approval of the Finance Report under 12B.
Move approval of Finance Report. Second. Motion in a second, and I'm going to, we normally hear from the Finance Committee. I'm presuming everything's copsetic?
Everything's copseted.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything opposed?
And I have a question, approval of the recommendations under 12C, one through seven, if that would be the amendment to the agenda.
Move second. They were with you by the Finance Committee.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any additional questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Agenda item thirteen is a report from committee. We have a, any committee reports?
I have a short one. Oh, go ahead, Mary Ann.
I attended the ACCT in Seattle. I attended three sessions on financing and the one on financial aid, and I've talked to, Bodie, we're going to check into making payroll payments and payments, so that students don't get all their money at one time and then drop the class.
I think that's a good idea.
Also, I attended the Senate meeting, and I voted for the new trustees. We've got six new trustees go on the national board, and so, we had to vote on them. It lasted one hour and fifteen minutes, so that was really good, because usually, it's five or six votes for the same person, because so many of them are running. We didn't have that this time, and I was really pleased. I attended the regional meeting and got hooked into being on the nominating committee for our region, because Kansas was not on there. So, got something else to do.
Matching that.
I had an opportunity to talk to a couple of people who are doing something different for the ACCT, for the national. I passed out to everybody but the president, because he shouldn't be getting one in the mail, about the national meeting. I'm going to find out that new bill that they were talking about. I do need to get that number, where they was going to hook on the bill for the, some time ago, they had had a bill in Congress where the colleges was going to be caught in a bind if the students didn't pay back their student loans.
Oh, yes.
Okay. What I heard was they were planning on hooking it on to some other kind of bill to slide it through. So, I will get that bill number.
Okay.
So, we can make our contact.
Okay. We need to watch that.
We need to watch that real closely. Also, talked to him about some issues that's going to come up on our November, about the soccer field for the November meeting, that I got some ideas from some other people up Dr. Givens told you the rest of the story. I do have some membership benefits, and they also have a governor's leadership in Salt Lake City, Utah, if anybody's interested. I got two copies of one and one of the other. They also have in January, Back to the Futures, it's twenty-four, twenty-fourteen Community College Future Assembly. It's going to be January the twenty-fifth or twenty-eighth. It's at Hilton, Walt Disney World, Orlando, Florida. And the deadline is November the first. So, anybody interested in that, let me know.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Kathy?
Okay. I just have a brief report on our most recent Advancement Council. We had Mr. Bodie present on the budget and really did an excellent and succinct job. I think people that have been on for a while, even those people had a little different slant on some of the, shall I say, peculiarities about how we carry over and do not carry over certain funds based on the state's requirements. But also, for our newer members, I think they got a really good sense, which for this group is really important when they get questions out in the community. So, I really want to thank Brian for that presentation. They also got to meet Dr. Vitale, and we had a good attendance, so that all went very well, and I want to thank you both for that. In addition, we requested that the panel that did the presentation on the strategic plan present that presentation from ACCT to the Advancement Council. And I think that would be a really valuable thing. I can say, in going to this national conference, and I thank you all for allowing me to go, one of the things I learned was in the hours of preparation that we went through for presenting this panel, really gave me some insights into the process that this college and those teams and team members have gone through to create this strategic plan. So, I felt very fortunate that I was able to be a part of that, and I think those of you who are here, we kind of had to do a little adjusting because we lost one of our members, and I think we were up till two o'clock in the morning or something like that the night before, and up bright and early, but we all rose to the occasion, and I'm anxious, and I know we all are, to get some feedback from the evaluations about how it was received. So, thank you all.
Okay. If they want to call it preparation time at two o'clock in the morning, I'm.
Well, we had fun doing that, too. It was, yeah. If you want to call that fun, I don't know.
Very good. Okay. Well, thank you, Kathy.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and it's wonderful to hear, you know, the Advancement Council just keeps getting edified and more engaged and so forth, and I think we're getting some, you know, getting some good return for that, obviously.
Definitely. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Right. Item fourteen is unfinished business. Does anyone have anything? I have one thing I'd like to ask, but I'll wait till. Anybody else? Okay. I'm wondering how we're coming along with our concealed carry exemption and our plan to, what our plan's going to be. There, as we come up, Darrell, aren't we moving up toward another deadline, January one?
Just, I would say interim report back to the trustee, but there's nothing due to the state official. I don't know if Dr. Givens made a similar request, and I think they're moving ahead.
Good. Okay. Anything to add, Dr. Givens?
No.
Okay. All right.
Greg and I have been through that long ways and have conversations, and we've tried to figure out if in fact we can, if we ever come down to it where we have to look at how we would purchase another decker, how we would manage those, of all the doors under this campus, which ones would become those doors, which ones would become locked, how few entrances would be left, how we would, why we would do it, which ones would be extremely critical versus just critical to happen at that, and we're looking through that. It is a.
It's arduous work, I know.
Yes. And it is a giant task when you, I thought I do all the doors in this building apart. Greg, you told me about a half dozen, I didn't know we were around, and so, it did keep kind of growing.
And in November, we are having a leadership, a second leadership training group meeting. We had our first, and it included the president, the vice presidents, the deans, the directors, and the associate directors. So, I think there were fifty, fifty-seven of us together, and that's the first time since I've been here that all of us were together. And they asked for, in reading the evaluations, they want more information and more training on safety. So, the focus of the one in November, that I haven't sent out a notice about yet, will focus on this issue. So, there might be some more information coming forward at that time.
Excellent.
We have some folks who are specialists in the area of safety, leading the conversation and doing the training with us.
Very good. Okay. We have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all.